Advising me not to do it, it's not appropriate.
Good, don't throw me under the bus.
No, I didn't throw you under the bus, he just said you advised him. And I like your advice. You ready? What, it stopped beeping? Hold on a sec. It's, 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 it's not cooperating. There it goes. All right, please rise for a lead by pledge allegiance by Mr. Dietz.
Hit the flag. The United States of America, in two liberal republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Umbel, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mr. Dietz.
Here.
Mrs. Farraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Vargo Heffner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Rinsky.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve July 5th meeting minutes.
Motion to approve by acclamation, Mr. President.
Thank you. Second. Mr. Dietz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Courtesy of the floor, I have nobody signed up on the list. Does anybody wish to address counsel tonight? Seeing no one, thank you. Next thing we have up on the agenda is confirmation of appointments. Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
The, we have further resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments as indicated thereafter. Lamont McClure and Lori Vargo Heffner. Lamont McClure's term is to expire December 31st, 2021, and Lori Vargo Heffner's term to, to expire December 31st, 2020.
For the general purpose authority?
For the general purpose authority, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any discussion? We had a discussion last night in personnel.
Just requests, could we split the two?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
First vote we're going to vote on is Mr. McClure, term to expire 12/31/21. Are any questions or concerns?
I'll just say this, I believe certainly Mr. McClure is qualified, but it's long been my position that, that there's a reason why we have an authority, and that's to create some separation from, from the government. And I voted against John Stoffel when his name was put up, and that's just how I felt, so that's why I asked. Thank you, that's all.
Any other discussion? Call the, call the roll, please.
Mr. McClure, Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Vargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
No.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Farraro.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to one.
Okay, next thing on agenda is Ms. Lori Vargo Heffner. What? You ready? I'm too fast for you?
No.
Term to expire 12/31/20. Any questions in regards to Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Mr. President.
Mr. Heckman.
I just want to say, Ms. Heffner, I think you'll be a great addition to the general purpose authority.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to say.
Any other praise for Ms. Heffner and her appointment? All right, call for the roll. Call for the vote, sorry.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. Vargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky. Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Farraro.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
You can vote for yourself. That means you're confident in your position. All right, the next thing is a very brief presentation from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. Ms. Becky Bradley. I know. Happy birthday, by the way.
Hey.
Thank you. Okay, I'm supposed to say presentation, I guess. See, you know, you guys are VIPs. Thank you, thank you for having me. I wanted to give you kind of a semi-annual update of what was happening and what the commission's doing. Hold on just a second. Okay, so we see every subdivision in land development that comes into Northampton County and also into Lehigh County as your county planning agency, and we provide advisory comments as well as municipal assistance back to the governments in the, in the region. I'm really going to focus on the Northampton County piece. There is a lot of extra information in here. If you want to see like how you stack up against Lehigh County.
I'm looking.
That sort of thing, it's in here, but I just wanted to focus on your numbers. This is just January to June. You've had 93 plans reviewed of a variety of types, which I'll talk to you about in a minute. But they're everything from Bethlehem City, which is fairly typical, to Lehigh Township, which is not in Lower Nazareth Township. There's usually some activity there, but not as much activity as we're starting to see in, as developments pushing, pushing out. So I just want to kind of monitor that. Now, again, this is just January to June. This is 2017, the whole year numbers for total amount of plans for the county as well. The blue color is no development. It's very typical to have a lot of those plans. That's simple things, lot line adjustments for sheds and the like for people. Non-residential means everything that isn't residential. So it's everything from retail to industrial, and I'll, I'll drill down to the industrial numbers in a minute. But really what you see here on the outside donut is the amount of acres that are proposed for development, and I would focus on the blue and the yellow because that really tells you what is, what farmland and undeveloped land is being converted to development of some sort. Yellow is the largest color, so that's residential. You have a high percentage of residential activity last year, but you do have a significant amount of non-residential, which is largely industrial. Then this is for the first six, six months. You see, you've had a lot of non-development activity, but you've had a good amount of industrial activity and some residential this year. Usually we get plans in two periods throughout the year. Late, late winter, early spring, because people want to get projects ready to stick a shovel in the ground as soon as the weather breaks, and then right before Thanksgiving, so they can get their financing in place before the end of the year to go to construction the next year. So January through June, this is warehouse and other industrial. Why I wanted to show you this is there should be a slight sliver of green in there. That is non-warehouse. All of the blue is warehouse. So of that, and that's very important for you to know, just this year alone, another 1.06 million square feet have been proposed here in Northampton County, just the first six months of, of this year. And that has major traffic implications. Now, this shows for both counties, where you see the two logos next to each other, you just assume that it's, it's valleywide. And this shows from 2013 all the way through the first six months of, of this year. 2013 to 2017 are only the top 10 largest for, for the year. The blue is warehouse. The green is all other industrial, which could be manufacturing, intermodal, that, that sort of thing. And so really, really what you're seeing is, is this massive growth. All in all, in under six years, we've had over 40 million square feet either planned for, approved, or currently in the pipeline. That makes us the fastest-growing e-commerce region in the United States of America right now, and the second fastest-growing in, in the world. And I mean, I'll, I'll talk you off about that offline, but it is something we absolutely need to talk about and monitor. December last year, we released an online data portal. We have a ton of data. We're the major data center for the region, and we wanted to make that data accessible to people 24 hours a day. So we started Data LV, and we've been adding to that monthly, actually. There's a series of online maps, basic information on population to detailed information on housing. We just finished the biannual housing data report, which is loaded up there. It even has an interactive map, so you can click on the community that you live in and see what a single-family detached house sells for. You could, you could also sort it by school district, and so you can kind of see where things are happening and where they're not. The main point of, of the analysis of this site is, and I just wanted to thank your assessment office for providing us with this information so we could do this analysis for you. We took 2008, because that's when we had the housing bubble burst, and we wanted to show you what happened every year. And so the big picture story is, is that our housing values are still recovering, but they're doing fairly well. And as you can see, the total number of units selling has gone up fairly significantly since that, that low point. In terms of the types of housing and what they're selling for, and again, the median is the exact middle. So this is the exact middle for all single-family detached, came in around 210,000. A single-family attached came in at 130,000, and multifamily at 158. Mobile homes, which also includes tiny houses, 76,000, and then condos are 194,500. All of those condo units are age-restricted, too. We were able to drill down into that information and find that out. And then we started looking at, you know, owners versus renters, because we're seeing a lot of new apartment developments come into the office for review, and we were able to kind of drill down into some more information related to that, and we wanted to kind of show you what that looks like over time. We still have a very strong ownership culture here. Really, the ownership rate hasn't changed substantially, but in terms of real numbers, that's what it looks like. So even though it's a 4% difference between 2012 and then 2016, you really start to see the growth in, in renters up 3,200. That's an important thing. Younger people have debt-to-income ratios that don't allow them to buy homes in the way that previous generations have. There are a lot of people who retire that don't want to mow a lawn anymore, that are making the choice to sell their home and rent as well. So, you know, it, it's not necessarily, you know, just a one-size or one-sided coin to that story, so I wanted to let you know that. One of the things that we piloted, it started last year, is trying to provide more direct services to the municipal governments. And Bath Borough came to us and said, hey, we have some issues with parking. That's how it started. And we also have issues with the school and kids being able to cross the street, cross the street safely during the, the school season. We're also worried about the truck growth and the traffic growth going through our borough. Very, very valid. So we set up some project goals, defined a study area, which I just wanted to show you, is roughly that historic core of Bath, and it really is at the intersection of all five state roads that come together kind of there in, in their downtown. So we ran some numbers for them, and we actually have a full report, which I'm happy to announce that the Borough Council adopted last week, which is fantastic. And it shows that just in Bath Borough, just with the development activity that we know today, and that's including residential and freight, as well as, as all other vehicles, that they should inspect, expect to have almost, not quite, a 30% increase in traffic between now and, and 2037. Now, we'll adjust that number as more development plans come in, but if you can't widen roads, you know, if, if you can't do substantial changes to the landscape, which you wouldn't in a, a place that, that has a dense development, this is what you can expect to see. So, you know, obviously people weren't exactly excited about that, but, you know, you have, you have to be honest about these things. So we said, okay, well, what are some things that we can really do? They actually amended a, a number of ordinances to help organize their parking. They actually started working on some zoning amendments to, to allow for different land uses, not only for their own future economic and, and, you know, community future, but to try and deal with some of the issues that are before them. And, you know, traffic calming becomes very important. It's important today, but it'll become even more important as traffic grows around there. So we did a whole series of community workshops with them and talked to the residents, figured out some different scenarios that may work for them, and developed, that some example renderings. The important part about this is, is now that they've adopted this, they have an official record, official plan, that now tees them up for access to federal and state dollars to implement these plans. So we were very happy with the experience that we had in Bath and that pilot. This is the intersection of West Main and Chestnut, and, you know, things like just having ADA curb ramps. It, it's important for people who have limited mobility, but, you know, it makes everyone's ability to walk across the street easier. If you're a mom with a stroller and you don't have to jump a curb, that makes a huge difference. So doing things like colored differentiated paving, too, which there's expensive options for that, there's also cheaper options for that involving paint, which are easier to maintain over time. But that aside, you know, that actually is a visual cue for drivers to kind of slow down. They're not necessarily used to seeing that, and that can help with pedestrian bicycle movements. You know, the, the sense of identity there is, is fantastic, too, so they wanted to reinforce that, and it really, really enhance, enhance that. We also worked with Lanta on this project, along with the borough. They have a lot of land-to-van service that comes into this specific section of the borough along Mill Street. Notice there's no sidewalks. The entryway there for the van is tough. It's also hard for cars, people, and the like. Significant amount of elderly persons in, in that complex. So adding a few things in terms of urban, they call it urban design, but really it's community design, could not only help with the delivery of service, but enhance the quality of life and maintain the viability of that complex going forward. It's also really critical as the county goes forward with some of the age-friendly community initiatives that it has with the United Way, too. And so all in all, we were able to develop a funding plan very, very quickly that tied into this, and this kind of outlines that and the anticipated schedule for those improvements, which ultimately are, are many millions of, of dollars. There were a couple of projects in the center of Bath that were already being proposed before we started working on this. Those actually, because of the community engagement, were enhanced. There are sidewalks on a bridge now, very important for people that are trying to walk through that area. So even though some, some of this was funded in advance, those projects are now going to be better. We're working very diligently with the communities north of the airport. We obviously have seen a lot of growth in development there. I mean, excuse my Midwestern-ness, but it is the wild, wild west up there for freight growth and development without adequate road and bridge infrastructure to handle that growth. Developers will invest around the development site, but they're not obligated to deal with the system as a whole. So a whole group of communities, and I may be missing one or two on here, came together with us and PennDOT and said, you know, we need to start addressing this. So right now, we're in the process of understanding what the issues are. There's been key stakeholder interviews with not only the municipalities, but the businesses and some of the residents around there. And there's a technical analysis underway. We're supposed to have an assessment and recommendations for things like Weaversville Road, what is, what is, what's going to happen there. Technically, right now, tractor trailers are banned. The regular-sized tractor trailers are banned on that road, but they're going through there every day. They're going through there multiple times a day. So, you know, what does that really mean? And so we're hoping to come up with a plan for that, which then we can figure out how to go compete for funds or fund through monies available to the region. We're updating your county comprehensive plan. We are very strategically linking that to the long-range transportation plan. Why? Because if projects are in the long-range transportation plan, they become eligible for federal funding for road, bridge, transit, rail, and trail monies. And that allows us to have one strategy. Instead of having two plans that say be consistent with the other, we have one strategy for, for the county and the region, and we're calling it Future LV. So what we have done over the last six months is we've taken everything that we learned from the prior year and the over 10,000 comments that we received in, in conversations, good conversations that we documented, and we put out a survey, a community-wide survey. We do these every so often. But this one, we had good information to craft, the, the questions around is part of this effort. I mean, I'm just going to highlight a few of the results. You have the whole, the whole thing in your packet. So we got over 1,000 responses. That made it statistically valid. And so we asked people a variety of things. What do you like most about living in the Lehigh Valley? Now, you're not going to be shocked by any of this. The top answer was parks recreation and open space, at 61% of the people. Natural lands and farmlands came in second at 59%, and then proximity to New York and, and Philadelphia. That one, you know, you may or may not have, have thought, but people like the access to other places and the connectivity that the county has to these other large metropolitan areas. And, and again, the rest of the list, I think, is in your packet, too, because there were many more options. Just show you the top three. And obviously, we asked the, the opposite of that. What do you like least about living in the Lehigh Valley? You're going to be shocked by this, too. Truck traffic at 66%, traffic congestion at 65%, and then warehouses at 56%. So this really tells you that the public is, is hit, hit, hit max on some of that. We went into a whole lot more detailed questions. I just want to show you one more of those. We asked them what strategies they thought were best for the region's future, especially around transportation and mobility. And what really came up out of this is they wanted more options. They wanted to be able to get out of their car and walk to a place safely. They wanted to be able to bike around. They wanted more access to, to transit, more opportunities to make different transportation choices than just to get in a car and drive. They still want that option, too, but they wanted a little bit more balance across the board, and that's really what this shows. We took our chalkboard cube all around the Lehigh Valley last year, and it was fantastic to, to get to, to talk to folks all around the region about what they wanted for the region. And we tied those answers into a, a series of questions, and, and here's one of them. We asked them what they thought their most important planning issues for the next 10 years would be. And, and my, my list's going to be different than their list. I mean, I care about, you know, what's, what's, what's happening with vehicle automation and some of those other things, but, you know, the things that are happening today, and this is what this really tells you, and, and what people care about for their future, is the preservation and protection of natural resources. All of these had a higher than 95% listed as important or very important. They want our infrastructure maintained. They wanted to know that they had a good water, public water and supply and good sewage disposal facilities. Yet they also want economic development. Sometimes those things compete, sometimes they don't. And so that, that becomes very important. We took the answers from the survey, and this is something that we're working on right now. This is an emerging field in planning, scenario planning, to, to look at, you know, answers that you've got for things and start to test them. So will economic development compete with natural resources in a certain scenario? You'll ask those kinds of questions. And this is what we did, again, is we took the community feedback. We identified future forces as well. Things like vehicle automation, telemedicine, people living longer, and factored those in as well as the answers that we got on things that we're all dealing with today. We wanted to assess those impacts and relationships and then develop some scenarios. We're working on four scenarios right now. We have a rough draft of the business-as-usual scenario, and then the commissioners last week asked us to develop a hybrid of housing affordability, walkability, and open space, too, to see what that might look like. So we're going to actually start working on a fifth scenario as well, but here's what happens in a business-as-usual scenario. So this is if we continue to develop at the same rate that we are. Continue to increase in population like we have at about 0.5% or 0.7% per year. That's about where we are for the last few years. If we continue to, you know, have increased vehicle registrations and the like. So we're going to have increased density. We're going to lose farmland and open space. We will have an increase in jobs, but our natural resource base will decline. Our tax base will increase in certain locations, yet the demand for services, which means more competition for those taxes, will also increase. Our GDP will increase. It's a good thing. Will continue to be more auto-dependent and maybe not have as much balance with some of those mode choices like walking and biking. The number of vehicles will increase. Our traffic and congestion will increase. Our housing supply will decrease. Again, this assumes that we keep doing everything as we're doing it today. We're not building enough housing units for regular people. That's, that's an issue. Will continue to have isolated pockets where there's high-quality education. Our public health will decline because we don't necessarily have those access to trails as quickly and as, 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 as we, we need them. And then that sense of place and quality of life that everyone holds so dear here will, will also decrease. Clearly, that's not the future that people said that they wanted in the survey. So then we're going to take this and start to then say, okay, well, what do we have to do to, to change that? What's acceptable? What's realistic? What's fundable? And so that's the next step after these scenarios, and you'll start to hear more about that. The other thing that we do is we manage about a $4 billion transportation program in partnership with both counties. PennDOT, U.S. Department of Transportation, the three cities, Lehigh Valley International Airport, Atlanta. Every other year, we update the cash flow model for that. And the projects are prioritized based on a set of stringent federal criteria, which always puts safety first. And you can read, followed by managing the existing investment that you have, which makes sense. Opportunities to improve mobility. Are there opportunities for partnerships, and is our investment going to perform over time? That's a, a very important point. We don't want to just throw money at something that, you know, you'll have to repave the road in another year. That doesn't make sense. The buckets are defined by the federal government, but roughly the highway budget, which I call the road, rail, and trail budget, because that's really what it goes for, not just highways, is, along with the bridge budget, is $388 million for 2019 through 2022, and the transit budget is $145.8 million. So that goes directly to, to Lanta. We were able to go and get additional funds into the region, which is something that I am very proud that we were able to do. And our contribution between the current transportation improvement program in this one is, is fairly substantially increased. This just shows the distribution of the projects that are planned over the next four years. And again, remember, these overlap, so every two years, you're updating a four-year plan. It's good to do that because things change that fast. But this just gives you an idea of where things are going. We're required to invest in what they call higher-order roads, or things like Route 22 that takes more cars before we invest in other things per federal law, so that always makes the conversation tricky as well. The investment for Northampton County is anticipated to be $188 million, a little bit over total. Now, you'll notice, too, there's a lot of opportunity to get additional resources in between now and the next two-year update cycle. If you look in the transportation improvement program, there's flex lines, there's reserves. That's what we used to fund the Meadows Road Bridge project, was a reserve line out of actually the current tip that's still in effect until October 1. So this number is anticipated to go up. Another thing that we're really, I'm working with Executive McClure on, and, and he brought up a really good point. How can we figure out how to help our municipalities become more competitive for these resources that they so desperately need? So we're coming up with a plan for that. We hope to have an open call for projects out in December. And then this just breaks it up, so you can see how the money is invested. Northampton County is getting roughly half of the, the bridge budget. We've been working a lot with Lanta to keep money flowing to them. There's some information in here on, you know, where people over the age of 65 are living, because they become eligible for Lanta van service and free transit pass. Also where the disabled and mobility impaired population is living, and we'll tie that back and work with Lanta on transit routing and Lanta van service. And then this just shows you, this is a medical facility. Part of the work that we do, too, along with Lanta, is i- if you are in a wheelchair, there is no way that you are easily going to be able to get off the bus. There's no curb ramp here. Go all the way down that sidewalk and back through the parking lot to get to the door of that building, which has the little awning. So working with the property owner in Lanta, we've come up with some, some options that we'll go talk through with them. And we're doing this all around the Lehigh Valley. We're working with your EMS folks. I was actually just there before I came here, to update the hazard mitigation plan. This helps federal emergency management agency money flow to the county and helps their operations, and also helps our municipal governments if there's a need for disaster relief. And what we're working on now, and what we're doing next, is we are finally working on a regional bike and pedestrian master plan. That'll connect the on- and off-road system to transit. We have a whole sidewalk inventory already online. You know about the regional plan, hazard mitigation. Part of the Data LV kind of version 2.0 is going to include what we're just calling generically Traffic X right now. That'll have all kinds of traffic data, like how many cars are on certain roads, what bridge ratings are, there are. We're also developing a, what's really a municipal freight resource portal. We're talking to as many communities as we can, especially the, the ones that have freight and logistics growth, saying, hey, here's how, some options to amend your ordinances to accommodate things like truck parking, so you don't have people pulled over at the side of the road on a shoulder in a residential neighborhood. Here's some things to consider when freight comes to your community. We've been doing that quietly, but we want to make a larger resource for everyone because we know that freight is not just now limited to Southside Bethlehem or by the Shren Interchange. We're hoping to work with the county. We're hoping to work with the county on first-ever blight reversal and remediation plan. That's in the works, and hopefully you'll hear about that soon, if that goes forward. Also, historic preservation plan. The DCD office was able to get a grant for that, which is fantastic. We're also working with Nazareth Area to update their multi-municipal comprehensive plan. This is critically important because they're square in the middle of freight and freight. And then also Slate Belt is well. So that's what we're working on now and next.
Is that, that's it?
I told you I'd try to keep it short.
That was only 30 minutes. That was pretty good.
It wasn't 30 minutes.
Look at you. I think Mr. Heckman has a question, so we're going to have this run another 15 minutes.
If you're lucky, it could go 20. But I know, I just have a question, a very, you're the person asked, so I'm taking advantage of it. What people want is very much like when I was on the commission in 1990. It hasn't changed much. Of course, what they don't like has been a big change with warehouses that we didn't have a problem with. And everybody complains about them, but they keep going up, and the traffic. But the thing that really I'm curious about, I got a chance to buzz through, and I'm going to go on your website and do some more research, is the rental situation. And I know through, and I'm on the redevelopment through Bethlehem, we get information on what's being planned there and what's being planned, primarily with the younger people. It affects seniors too, because many of these planned communities, I don't know who they're catering to with these rents. I mean, and they keep coming in and they want to build them, and especially for the young people. I really feel bad for them. I mean, and I know, as a parent, I mean, the rents are ridiculous. And yet, when they're coming in, everybody's building, every developer's building luxury apartments. And I'm just amazed because all the people I have talked to, and even the parents with young people, their kids can't afford, I mean, they can't afford the rents. And so a new development comes in, it's like another luxury townhouse. So, I mean, is this something that you've seen or heard?
Yeah.
Is it addressed? I mean, I don't know. It just seems like the needs and what's being built, I don't know who's filling these apartments.
Yeah, the people that are filling the apartments, they're being billed for millennials. And now I know the oldest millennial's 38 and probably has kids at this point, but the youngest one is in their 20s. But there might be some millennials living in them, but it's mostly people in Gen X like me or baby boomers, because, I mean, $1,200 a month in rent is like more than people pay in mortgages. People really do need rents, you know, in the $800 to $900 range. That's not really what's being, I won't say it's not being built, but it's not the majority of being built, of what's being built. The majority of what's being built is over $1,000 a month per apartment. That is probably not sustainable in the long haul. I actually wonder if some of these developments, once they're built, are really getting the rents that they're billing, that they're saying that they're getting, to be honest with you, because it does not match up with income. And we have that quantified at all.
That's what I was, Claire, so if I wanted to get more information on that, can I have your website or just come over?
Yeah, it's actually in the regional housing plan, 2014 regional housing plan. And Amanda Roundenbush, our Director of Community Planning, is actually doing an update with her staff right now to double-check some new information, since 2014 seems like a long time ago, though it really isn't at the end of the day, but want to keep working on that. We actually have been talking about convening a conversation on that with the developers and a couple of the nonprofit housing agencies to figure out what we might be able to do, because we know we have some work to do related to workforce housing regionally. So we need to take this good information and have a better conversation.
I remember talking to a contractor before the bubble burst in 2008, and I asked him, why can't you build ranchers when so many senior things were getting very hot and popular? Why can't you build a two-bedroom rancher for $120,000, $125,000? Because with materials, you could do it. Because, and he said, theoretically, I could do it and I'd still make money, but I throw a few more bucks into it and I can sell it for $300,000 and make a lot more. So I realized money, the answer, like when sports analysts said, the answer to your first three questions are money, money, and money. I just don't see the supply meeting the demand in a market society. I would think some developers would look for the people, for the young people with lower rents, but that was what I was curious about.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm finished, Mr. President.
The only question I had for you, and I ask you every time you're up here. Nobody asked about regional rail? No one asked about getting an easier way to get into New York or Philadelphia? That wasn't part of your study?
All the time. They talk about it all the time. Well, I have scars around that conversation, mostly from the federal government. But we don't meet the criteria. We don't have the density to support a rail system. But if we can improve certain things, like the bus rapid transit, and that works out, then we can start to become competitive for other mobility funds. The other thing that's happening on the federal scene right now is rail isn't necessarily the most favored mode, especially with the autonomous vehicle conversation happening. So that's just a thing that's actually been happening beyond the current administration.
So the idea is more cars with one person in each car, and since they're autonomous, we'll get there quicker.
Right. Or take Uber, which is essentially a chauffeur service.
All right, well, that's disappointing, as usual. Any other questions for Ms. Brad? Okay?
Carmen, just, I want to thank you. I know you guys do great work over there.
Thank you.
And they also moved one of the meetings that conflicted with one of our meetings. I appreciate that. And that's basically it. Thank you for the bridge thing too, that you got to move the money and worked with the administration.
Is your mic on?
It is now. Thank you, Ken. The rent that is being driven by these luxury apartments is also driving up surrounding rent, which makes it impossible to get an apartment for families. So if you have, women and children are disproportionately affected by this. You know, it's really a crisis, and we really need to address that. The second thing that I wanted to say was, I know that you have a climate change plan. How does that integrate with all this? Because there's nothing here that talks about air, like clean air or water or any resources and that. It doesn't talk about renewable energy proliferation at all. And I think that that's a resource in Lehigh Valley that we could develop. I mean, you know, we're going to talk about hydro today, solar, wind, those kind of things. I did notice in here that you did talk about natural gas and electric, so. So if you're going to start increasing those sorts of things, we have to start looking for the future and also integrating your other plan in that. So, you know, at some point in time, I'd love to have a conversation with you about that.
Sure, and just, you're right. And really quickly, this is just what we're like working on right now.
I get it. This is a lot.
But yeah, one of the things that's going into the regional plan, update the future LV, is we have to work on the electric grid as well as broadband and Wi-Fi. As we go and change to electric cars, it's going to be critical that we have charging stations absolutely everywhere. So we're going to have to totally rethink our infrastructure in a different way. And, you know, started having a conversation with PPL on that and then MedEd, so they've been starting to become really good resources on that, as well as the Wi-Fi piece. The alternative energy thing too, where obviously that underpins everything that we do, because we're in air quality non-attainment area for ozone. And so that derives actually where we invest and where we don't in transportation infrastructure. So it's not overt, and here we are working more on it, and I would definitely welcome the conversation and talk to you more about what we could do.
Yeah, definitely. Anytime.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Warren?
One fast, first of all, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Secondly, we know you're beleaguered by a lot of things, okay? I was reading through this. This new e-commerce thing that's taking place with the warehouses has a lot of people concerned. There's no question, they're showing up at meetings. This isn't a new thing. Amazon's been coming, UPS has been coming. Now, there are only a few big players, correct? This isn't like 50, this is like maybe 10? Big warehouse space, no?
Uh, no, it's more than that.
Is it more than that? Okay. Well, in that case, since it is more than that, okay? My question gets even more interesting. Have they partnered? Have they decided to partner or invest in the infrastructures and doing help with the communities surrounding them?
That's an open-ended question.
I'm sorry. Should I change that to not an open-ended question?
It's a very good question.
It's a good question.
FedEx is the only one that has done a substantial investment in the infrastructure around so far, yet Amazon, for example, has a cooperative agreement with Lanta to make sure that their workforce can get to their facilities on time to meet the shift. So, I mean, there's, you know, more than one way to have that conversation, I guess, is my point.
This $600 billion market, it's inland participation attack on our area. So my question would be simply, when you're in there, put your hand out and say, how about helping us out while you're taking billions out of our area and maybe reducing some of our quality of life?
Sure. And I think that's where the counties can be really helpful.
And that's not a nasty question.
Oh, no.
You know, we're all living here. It's a concern, so.
I know the local government there, the area, when Amazon was coming in, raised quite a stink about the road and the infrastructure. For them to get that through, they said they would do all that. Now, if everybody would do that in their communities when they're putting up like this, you know, like Shrin put an interchange, you get their people right on the highway, but, you know, after that, you forget about everything else, where you're going. But I think if it wasn't for the local uproar, and how many times and how many meetings we had to get that thing started, they would have never done those roads. And they did them, they're doing them all. Plus our three-lainer, if we ever get it done.
And the great payback we got on.
You're right about Shrin.
I mean, it's great.
I didn't mean to forget the Shrin investment. And that makes sense there.
Well, and also, isn't it true, I mean, what you just said, what both Bob, it's the local communities at the end of the day who are approving these plans.
The local zoning.
And at first, I know when its first boom came, it was, oh, great, we have all these guys are going to pay, we're going to get a lot of money coming in. And then now, as Bob was alluding to, I think they're seeing more and more of their residents coming in and going, we get it, more warehouses.
The only reason I bring it up is it was when CEOs bring their high-value executives into an area, first thing they ask about is quality of life, parks, recreation, homes, okay? Closeness, schools. When new big companies come in, they're bringing those people in, they should be asking the same questions instead of not worrying about drainage or how much macadam we put down or square footage. So that's the only reason I brought it up, and I know you've got it in your book of things to do. So thank you for doing that.
You do?
And thank you for your support.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
I do. With all this planning, where does all this pipeline talk come in with some of the planning that you're doing? Because I mean, I'm reading this and I'm hearing this, and I'm seeing quality of life, and we want to protect our farmlands, and then here's this whole entity that's going to come in and definitely impact all these beautiful plans.
Yeah, the pipeline, the first proposal came in, what, about a year and a half ago now? I might be off a little bit on the timeline.
For what? The Pennies Pipeline? That's 2014.
Yeah, well, we got it in the office roughly then. And so what's really interesting about that is all the comments that were sent to FERC and didn't hear a whole lot back, and FERC approved the plan, so.
FERC gave conditional approval. They haven't gotten approval yet. They just got an extension from the DEP to get their water permits and things like that too, so that's not necessarily a done deal. But if we did raise a little bit more of a stink about it and talked about a little bit more about how it botches our planning, I think that we could really do, make a dent in it. I think more people and more entities really have to start discussing it too, because residents are being impacted by having their land taken through eminent domain. There's only so much, you know, Joe the farmer can do, or, you know, if we want to get specific, Guy Wagner, you know, or Linda Heindell. You know what I mean? So like the entities that are being impacted by it that are larger, like our council, your planning commission, they have to start reaching out and talking to FERC and getting on the docket, even if it's an out-of-time submission, to say how this is going to negatively impact our infrastructure here and prevent us from getting off and changing our grid system, which is what we have to do in the future.
Yeah, the Environment Committee of LVPC did send during the time periods that were open for that, we did send letters.
Did you get a copy of the environmental impact statements?
Yeah, and we talked about it.
Okay, well, thank you. We're 45 minutes, and we need to get a meeting going, so thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Hey, you opened that can of worms, and I was just going to...
I'm going on the record, I'm for pipelines.
Very quickly.
Mr. McCour?
Very quickly, sir. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Happy birthday. Thank you for, she's still here?
She's got to get to dinner. She probably has reservations.
Thank you for getting Bridge, helping us get Bridge 15 on the tip in Lower Salkin. We have a bridge in Lower Mount Bethel Township, Bridge number 31, we would like your help with to get that on the tip as well. You going? Okay, bye. But just very quickly, you know, the presentation was very timely in that I, on Tuesday, I had the LVPC executive board meeting, and then I had the LVEDC executive board meeting, and it was like I was on two different planets. What we need to decide together is, you know, what, in our own small way, we are going to do, what's our strategy? What's our plan of attack for attempting to impact the vision of the future? The companies are coming here. You know, my friend Don Cunningham wants me to call them fulfillment centers, distribution centers. He doesn't want me calling them warehouses unless they actually are a warehouse. But the fact of the matter is, you know, it doesn't pass the Aunt Mary test, they're all warehouses. And so we're coming, we're going to have a large collision between our folks who live here for the quality of life and these international fulfillment players who do not care. FedEx, they don't care. UPS, I'm glad to have the 900 jobs they're bringing to Shrin, but they don't care. You know, Amazon, they don't care. They're not interested in the quality of life of our folks. So we have to balance economic development. We're all very happy we're getting UPS in Shrin, where it belongs. You know, these types of developments need to take place in Shrin, in Majestic, in LVIP, South Side Bethlehem. That's where they need to be. Anywhere else, we need to, at a minimum, discourage and not encourage that type of development, and it's still not enough. But we have to try. And the other thing we can do, I talk about North Hampton County's future being greener. The other thing we have to do is preserve as much farmland, open space, and environmentally sensitive land as we can, consistent with our obligations to spend taxpayer money well. These are the only things we can do. All of the zoning decisions, as you all know, are made at the local level, and they are no match. The folks at the local level are no match for Amazon, FedEx, that their lawyers are better, that it's just, it's not a fair fight. And ultimately, our law, our law favors development. It just does. So until that changes, we need to do what we can do, the small things we can do.
State law, not our law.
No, state law. Yeah, state law, right. So that's, so my plan for whatever time I'm here is, I'm going to be as aggressive as I can, having development directed to the places it should be. Shrin, Majestic, LVIP, what little they have left, and the South Side of Bethlehem. So you're not going to see, unless it's in the Slate Belt, maybe a different story, because that's the only place in the Lehigh Valley, we think, in the next 10 years, any kind of real economic, new growth should occur. But so we're going to be very aggressive. You're going to see our budget sometime in September, early October, and there will be a renewed and invigorated effort to purchase as much farmland, environmentally sensitive land, and open spaces we can, consistent with our fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers. But we're out of time, gang. I mean, I spoke at the Freight Summit. You could just feel it, you know, figuratively, the freight train coming at us. It's coming, and we need to do everything we can do to make our communities as livable as we possibly can while we're here. That's just, that's where it's at. Thank you for indulging me in that. I have received notice that Norris McLaughlin, as of tomorrow afternoon, won't be representing the General Purpose Authority. With respect to P3, I would like to single out PPL for just being terrific to work with in terms of temporary and permanent utility location, helping us get these bridges moving. I'd also like to thank, give a heartfelt thank you to Mark Troutman from First Energy, the parent of MedEd, who came to meet with Mr. Emili and Mr. Dirtiger and myself yesterday in order to rationalize tree clearing. You can't move utilities without cutting down trees, trimming tree branches. MedEd fully understands that. They're very supportive of our plans, and why this is important is, until the trees get trimmed, the utilities get temporarily relocated, no work can get done. So unless the utility is willing to work with us, we'll constantly have Krieger coming back to us saying, well, we can't get the job done on time because the utilities aren't prepared. But Mr. Troutman was here, I can't praise him enough for... But Mr. Troutman was here, I can't, I can't praise him enough for his attention to detail yesterday when we met with him and I hope that there's follow-through from MedEd and I thank them very much. Mr. Emili talked a little bit about P3 yesterday when he was asked. Originally, we were supposed to have 10 bridges at the end of this year. We now know that only nine can possibly be delivered and there was a release from Mr. Langen, Chair of the GPA, not too long ago, who said we'll have four or five. But we will keep pressing forward. Mr. Emili is working very hard. We've cleared the path for him and he is working very hard and very diligently and I think they like working with Mr. Emili because they don't want to meet with Mr. Dirtinger anymore, so. I think the New, I think the New York thing is wearing on now. Okay, so that, that's, that's that. A couple other things. I really want to talk briefly about the consideration of your mutual aid agreement between Gracemont and the Hospital Health System Association of Pennsylvania. When they brought this, when Gracemont brought this contract to me, it was a no-brainer, but I read it first before I signed it, as I, as I want to do. And the reason I brought it before you is, in an emergency, it commits Gracemont to helping other large healthcare facilities and, and one of the things it does is it requires Gracemont to provide the necessary medications if medications are needed. This struck me as an expenditure of money and only county council can really approve that, so I brought that to you for your consideration. It's really in, my first instinct when I, when I first read it was, well, why do we want to commit the county to, you know, helping other large facilities in a defensive posture, you know, protecting county interests? And then I thought, you know, what about if we need to take folks who are stranded at Gracemont to St. Luke's or, or some other place? We really need to be in this mutual aid pack. It's the right thing to do, it's good government, it's good for society, but you need to approve it because I think there's potentiality that their funds could be expended and only county council can approve that. So, that's that. I am really, on your agenda, you have the Big Trucks Resolution, I think, and I'm really grateful to Councilwoman Zirinsky for bringing this forward. We were contacted by the Big Truck folks and I think she's gonna lay out for you exactly what this is and it dovetails very nicely with our conversation tonight. And I hope you'll all, it's, it's merely precatory, it's, it's just our recommendation to the federal government not to permit bigger trucks and I really hope that you'll hear her out and approve that. And thank you very much. I will no longer take up any more of your time.
Thank you, Mr. McCorr. Anybody have any questions for the Pen Executive?
Thank you.
See none, thank you. Is there any other old business to discuss tonight? Okay, see none. New business, introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for Amendments to Northampton County Ordinance Number 411-2003," titled, "An Ordinance of the County Council of the County of Northampton, Pennsylvania, Requiring an Annual License Permit Fee for Commercial Weighing, Measuring, or Scanning Devices," setting forth definitions, establishing the requirements for obtaining a permit, setting forth penalties for violating thereof, and establishing an effective date. I need someone to sponsor this ordinance.
I will.
Ms. Vargo Heffner, I need a second for to sponsor it. Mr. McGee. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held in August 2nd, 2018 meeting. And next thing we have is a consideration of appointment of sheriff resolution. Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
Yes, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that Richard A. Johnston shall be confirmed in his appointment as sheriff at the pay grade group, group five, salary of $89,235, effective July 19th, 2018.
I think it's a very good, good choice. Is there any discussion? I know, I know Mr. Johnson is here with his family. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
We had a long thing yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, we had a long discussion yesterday and it was unanimously put forward to tonight's meeting for approval. See none?
Call a question.
Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Epstein.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero with one extension.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next thing is consideration of personnel request resolution, Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Families Division and Gracemont. I guess we're gonna do these all individually or you want to put them together?
Put them together.
Individually. So, the first one is Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Families Division in Gracemont. A, Mr. McGee?
Okay. Yes, that's on top. Be it further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time vacant position of clerk typist two, salary $28,024, shall be eliminated and one full-time position of clerk typist three, salary $32,597, shall be created in the Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Family Division, effective July 19th, 2018. All of them, good. And also, be it further resolved that one full-time position of social service aide, pay grade PS27, salary $28,024, shall be eliminated and one full-time position of social service aide, pay grade PS29B, salary $29,451, shall be created in the Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Family Division, effective July 19th, 2018. Be it further resolved that one full-time position, attorney two, salary of $63,000, shall be created in the Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Family Division, effective July 19th, 2018. Further resolved, one full-time position of accountant, one, pay grade HS35, salary $40,622, shall be created in Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Family Division, effective July 19th, 2018. And one full-time position, caseworker three, salary of $43,471, will be, shall be created in Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Family Division, effective July 19th, 2018. And two full-time positions of caseworker supervisor, salary $46,370, $357, shall be created in the Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Family Division, effective July 19th, 2018. And be it further resolved that six full-time positions of caseworker two, salary of $39,466, shall be created in the Department of Human Services, Children, Youth, and Family Division, effective July 19th, 2018. So moved.
All right, we had much discussion on this last night at our Personnel Committee meeting, was put forward unanimously, I believe. Is there any other discussion on this? See none? Could you call for the vote, please?
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky? Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, Bill, you're not getting off easy tonight. Next thing is Department of Human Services, Gracemont. Mr. McGee, could you introduce the resolution, please?
Yes. It's resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Director of Nursing, pay grade CS33, Step 4D, salary of $84,876 in the Department of Human Services, Gracemont. Nursing homes shall be upgraded to the pay grade salary of $101,266, effective July 19th, 2018. So moved.
Okay, same meeting last night, unanimously approved. Any other discussion on this increase in pay for a position that's not filled yet? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky? Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Next thing is Department of Administration Waits and Measures Division. Mr. McGee?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one part-time position of Deputy Sealer, salary $13,789, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration Waits, Measures Division, effective July 19th, 2018. And be it further resolved that one full-time position of Deputy Sealer, pay, salary of $27,577, shall be created in the Department of Administration Waits and Measures, effective July 19th, 2018. So moved.
Is there any other discussion on this resolution? See none? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky? Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, next thing is consideration of a mutual aid agreement between Gracemont Nursing Home and the Hospital and Health Systems Association of Pennsylvania Healthcare Coalition Resolution. I believe that's what Mr. McCorr just spoke to. Ms. Vargo Heffner, can you introduce the resolution, please? And now therefore be it resolved.
Now therefore be it resolved, hereby resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation, attachment number one, to provide an MMA between Gracemont and HAP in order to provide for the continuity of care for patients in emergencies as defined. So moved.
Are there any discussion on this?
The only thing I would ask, I'm gonna go vote for it based on the report of the county executive. I'm always concerned, going way back when we talked about a health department, the tight-fisted policies of the health organizations, operations in the, around the area, so, I mean, I'm sure we'll be watching carefully.
It, it covers disasters, sir.
All right, yeah, I'm gonna vote for it.
And I appreciate Mr. McCorr bringing it to county council because it does have the potential of us spending money if a disaster were to occur. Any other questions, discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, here's one that I like a lot, consideration of matching grant funds, New England Hydro Power Company, LLC Resolution. Ms. Zirinsky, could you please introduce the, now therefore be it resolved?
Now therefore be it resolved that Northampton County Council supports replacement of a small-scale hydroelectric power plant along historic Delaware and Lehigh now in Rock Number 37. Be it further resolved, Northampton County Council authorizes the county executive to make available up to $1.5 million in matching funds so that New England Power Company, LLC, can take advantage of the maximum potential award under the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's alternative and renewable energy program. Be it further resolved, Northampton County Council understands the county in Northampton is not committed beyond the matching funds unless it agrees to purchase the power from this generation station. Be it further resolved, Northampton County Council further understands that these funds revert back to funding sources within Northampton County's 2019 budget if the funds are not used or allocated to this project.
All right, now, I know we have some people here from the hydroelectric project, but we had discussed this a few times. I think it's a great, great thing. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or anything they want to go over anymore? Peg?
I guess I'd like to know, where in the budget is this coming from? What line item in the budget?
That was in last night's meeting.
Would provide for this?
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm sure you went over this yesterday and I apologize.
It, it is not in the 2018 budget. It will be budgeted in 2019 and there are funding sources we've identified, loan funds that have been sitting with Northampton County General Purpose Authority and the potential for county tax dollars to go into that and we'll be bringing that forward with the 2019
Any other questions? Mr.?
Not a question, just a comment. I mean, I think from a science and engineering standpoint, this is terrific. From a dollars and cents standpoint, it's not, so I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
No.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of seven to two.
Okay, thank you. I can't wait to see this thing up and running. Next thing on the agenda, consideration of resolution opposing an increase in truck size or weight at the federal level. Ms. Zirinsky, could you introduce the resolution, please? Now therefore be it resolved will be fine. This is, yeah, why don't you do that in discussions? We'll discuss it. Go ahead, give us a background.
So, the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks in February 22nd...
Is your mic on again?
All right, okay. Sorry about that. So, the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks issued a press release, February 22nd of this year, saying that 1,000 community leaders delivered a letter to Congress opposing bigger trucks. Why I think this is pertinent here is because all of these thousand letters went to Congress saying that they didn't want these bigger trucks. The biggest proponents of these are FedEx, UPS, Amazon, all of which affect this area right here. Now, these bigger trucks propose safety issues, they're taking up our roads and actually putting more weight and more impact on the, on the infrastructure that we have. I think it's important that we limit these and that we also support this opposition within Congress, so that's why I and Lamont decided that we really need to make this initiative happen. So, I don't know if you have any other questions, but I think it really dovetails with the Lehigh Valley transportation study because we know that we have so many warehouses here and we know that there is a shift to use these bigger trucks because if you have bigger trucks, you can haul more in less amount of time. But that doesn't mean that they're, they're safer or that they have less impact on our roads. And we already know that the impact on our roads is a problem that we're having right now and in the future.
Well, not only that, but we rank second or third or something as the most structurally deficient bridges in the, in the country. I mean, I mean, I think we're behind Alabama and stuff, so, I mean, heavier trucks, bigger trucks, longer trucks, you know, it's, it's, it's a huge impact. I don't even like passing the double trucks on the highway, so, I agree 100% and support this. We should send this out and hopefully, Mr. Warner?
I, I am in agreement with this also. I'd like to take it a step further, all right, because our, the impacts on our communities have been, have been starting to occur, the damages that have been done to our roads and the infrastructures have not, that they have been neglected in terms of what these companies are, are asking of our communities. They're, they're bringing, they're rerouting these GPS trucks through our communities and the structures and the roads cannot handle it. There are valleys being created and you can feel it when you drive. And I think it'd be, be important that those companies that are bringing those trucks to those communities be held accountable for any damages on those roads incurred by
the trucks. So I would go a step further and say, yes, support this, and also, let's, let's put some punitive information in there that says they're absolutely responsible for that. I'm not asking for, no, I'm not asking to amend the.
I know, I was like, whoa.
No, 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 no.
Any other discussion?
Maybe we could work on that amendment, or not an amendment, but a further thing down the road.
Not now.
Well, let's see what the feds do.
Yeah.
That has to be determined.
I'm going to vote for this, but I mean, I, my fear is what you just said, Mr. Kraft. I think the feds are going to do what the feds are going to do regarding money, but I certainly support this, and yes.
Great, okay, call for the vote, please.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, next one is consideration of Article 13 contracts. We have A, On Shift Incorporated. We're going to do these individually, so go ahead. Mr. Heckman, On Shift Incorporated, now therefore be it resolved.
Where did I go find it?
Second to last.
This is it, right here? Yeah, okay. All right. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with On Shift Incorporated. It's attached, and if you wanted me to read the conditions, but you did last night.
No, you had a meeting last night and went over this in length.
Yes, we did.
Were there any other questions in regards to the On Shift part of this? Seeing none? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Next part, Mr. Heckman's, consideration of Article 13 contract, Kingsbury, Herman, Freud, and Fall, and Montgomery, McCracken, Walker, and Rhodes. Heck of a walk, right?
Well, I will explain. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract to Kingsbury, Herman, Freud, and Fall, and additionally to the firm of Montgomery, McCracken, Walker, and Rhodes.
Thank you. You had a discussion about this last night. I thought there were questions, and is there any other discussion with regards to this offer? Seeing none? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, is there any other new business to discuss tonight?
Just a question. It came up earlier this evening that the GPA will no longer be represented by their current firm. I guess my question for the newly appointed members is, what process do you anticipate to secure proper legal representation?
I imagine since the GPA is an independent board, they will sit in a convene and decide which attorney will best represent them and make a vote, and that's how it's going to happen.
What he said.
You know the answer to that one.
I think, I think I do know the answer.
You're ruining his back.
You just wanted to hear it, okay. Any other new business to discuss?
I, it's, it's time, and I know that Lamont has a bottle of champagne from 2013. He's been waiting to crash against the generators at Gracemont.
Oh, yeah.
But there are, the generators are there, they're in place, they are going to be oper- Michael's not here.
Huzzletown.
They're going to be operating in another month, I believe. And, and I just want everybody to know that that process has a lot of people to thank for what they do.
How many are there?
There are three, there are three. I have pictures, I didn't tell you.
So you have one bottle of champagne and three generators?
Well, you have, deal that, we deal with that one.
Three?
The christening, christings.
I got dibs on one.
Andre's.
Cheap, we can't afford this. Come out of the contingency fund, we'll buy some, yeah.
But I want the.
Yeah, we'll, we'll spring for two bottles.
Five years ago, we swore that, in the media, it said, "Get the damn generators here," and now they are, so there we are.
Well, that's great.
Okay, so everybody should be jumping for drugs.
They're actually sitting on concrete pads and exist.
They're there, and they look great, and they're huge.
That's great, that's great. So this winter, will we lose power? Gracemont won't lose power.
Very good.
Any other new business? Seeing none? Council committee reports, or any committee reports? Not on this side? Well, she, she had a committee meeting, but we were all here.
I just had a committee meeting. You were all here, and you all heard it.
So she had to report on something that we all heard.
I had a finance fact yesterday.
Well, that's Kenny. That's true.
Roots of which we handled tonight.